I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
Menzner.
Here.
Voorhees.
Here.
Okay. That brings us to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Today, we do have an announcement, and we have Elizabeth King here from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and she will present a really exciting announcement for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it on?
Yeah, it is.
Cool. Thank you, Mayor Crapp, and thank you, Mount Clemens City Council, for having me here this evening. My name is Elizabeth King. I'm a senior planner at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and I'm just going to read this letter of congratulations from our CEO, Quinton L. Messer Jr. So, "On behalf of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, I would like to congratulate you and the city of Mount Clemens on your recent achievement of becoming the sixth redevelopment-ready community to reach the Essentials designation under the new RRC 2.0 framework. This is a great accomplishment for the city of Mount Clemens and the redevelopment-ready communities program. By meeting all of the Essentials RRC best practice criteria, Mount Clemens is able to provide a predictable development experience to help achieve the city's overall community development vision. As we work together toward economic recovery following this crisis, your RRC Essential status will be more valuable than ever as it signals to developers that the city is open for business with a streamlined and organized development review process in place. Mount Clemens is poised for success. The long hours it took to incorporate all of the key documents, establish practices, and meet local and planning and zoning responsibilities under Michigan law have created a strong foundation for the city. Additionally, valuable collaboration with local and regional partners will help the city's efforts to create the type of attractive place where talent will want to live and work and businesses will want to invest and grow. By meeting the Essentials designation, your community will now unlock ongoing benefits, including continued technical assistance funding, Essentials marketing materials, and more. I encourage you to take advantage of these valuable resources as you continue to support your community's growth moving forward. Becoming our sixth community to reach Essentials is a huge accomplishment. Congratulations once again to you, your local leaders, your hard-working municipal staff, especially Community Development Director Brian Tingley, for your tireless investments into making your community redevelopment-ready. We look forward to further strengthening our partnership with your community and its stakeholders as you continue implementing your local vision for success."
Thank you. Thank you.
And now, I'd like to present this RRC Essentials Award to you.
Brian, will you come up with me and...
Brian.
I'm welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Put it out so everybody can see. Sorry. I just want to acknowledge, Brian, we've been working, your department has been working on this initiative for quite a few years, and so we really thank you for your due diligence and commitment to making this happen. All right, we will go ahead and move on with the next section of the agenda, and that is the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor Crapp, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees. Yes.
This is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you give us your first na-- sorry, your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. First, we will ask those in the-- in public to address the commission, and then we'll go ahead and go to Zoom. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission at this time? Feel free to come up to the microphone.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
My name is John Agalero. I live at 242 Riverside in Mount Clemens Drive. I'm representing several homeowners and renters on the street that have lived there for a while. We know it's a historical street. We love our street very much. We've had a tremendous amount of flooding over the past couple of years, and it's not just water in the basements. It's like, it's literally feces and leaves and frogs, and we get told, well, it's a 20-year storm. We get told, well, we found a 2-by-4 in the sewer drain, but one 2-by-4 doesn't do this, and we've had seven of these 20-year storms in the past 10 years. So, we're asking as homeowners and renters if we could get some sort of committee to look into this because it's killing us. I run my business out of my home. I have tons and tons of-- we can't utilize our basements at all, can't keep anything on the floor. Not only that, obviously, we're taking time off of work to scrub stuff that's definitely a health matter. Is there something we can do? We don't know. We're exhausted, and we're coming to you for some sort of answer.
We'll look into it.
Okay. Can we give phone numbers or names, or can we sit down with someone and discuss it and further just to get it, get the ball rolling?
Why don't you get your phone number private, so it's not going to be out there for everybody to call you? How about that?
Yeah.
That sounds great.
We'll get your number in.
We'd be happy to sit down with you.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone else in, in public who would like to? Thank you.
Eric Rick, 1689 Hampton, Mount Clemens, Michigan. First, as somebody who lived in Seminole Hills, and we used to get that kind of flooding, I sympathize. Now, as far as the, the award we just got, that's great, but just like Commissioner Dempsey had mentioned, it's also about the schools as far as getting people to want to come here. And there is a new community conversations being hosted by the library at the Karn Center focused on education on the 24th at 7:00 PM. So if you are interested in coming together to come up with a plan and a way to move forward and a way to deal with issues about education here in the city, the 24th at 7:00 PM at the Karn Center hosted by the library, all of you would, presence would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Is there anyone else in person who would like to address the commission? Feel free to come up to the microphone.
Hello. My name is Melinda Paul, P-A-H-L. I'm the homeowner at 221 Riverside, and just like John had stepped up here, I've owned that home for 20 years, and my great flood was 12 inches, 2010. And that was basically, once again, being told that a pump wasn't working, and then in the mail, there was a 2-by-4. I moved out of that house, and now it's set up to be rented. You make sure every year that I get a notice for you to go through my, my house and make sure that it's deemed safe, that the alarms are working and the switches are working. What I cleaned up two weeks ago when my renter called me and came and cleaned from 11 until 5, I had already done that multiple times, but let alone have her to have to go through this. Once again, if it was storm water, totally different. This is unhealthy water. She has children. If I left that water in when your person came in to tell me that it wasn't safe for my renter to live there, I'm pretty sure that that would be an issue. I can't sell that house. She wants to. I bought a house 20 years ago in Mount Clemens because it was up and coming. That was 20 years ago, folks. So, it's not up and coming. I'm, this, I don't want to deal with this, so if we can move forward, we'll get a number, and this has to be fixed. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks. Is there anyone else? We come in?
Hello. My name is Bill Buckholz, 240 Riverside Drive. I'm here with some of the other residents to talk about the water problem on that street. And it's, it's not a flooding problem. It's not a water problem. It's a sewage backup problem that is putting feces into all of our homes on a regular basis. Okay? So, the sewer system was broken. I've been there for 20 years. When I moved into my home, it was the original owners who built that house in 1949. When we looked at the home, the basement was immaculate. There wasn't a thing in it. Because within a year, we had floods, which we understood why people who had been there for 29 years before us didn't put anything in their basement. We have had dozens of backups, thousands of dollars in damages. To help to mitigate that issue, I've spent over $10,000 on systems within that home to try and control that flood, the sewage water that's coming in. The comment that we got from people, we talked to the city before, this is a 100-year storm. Everybody in this room needs to read the news, look around. Dearborn is spending $40 million to deal with this issue. There's multiple other communities that are also doing that, okay? Rose Point is in the middle of a lawsuit about this issue. Wisconsin has programs. Minnesota has programs. Canada has a nationwide program to deal with sewage backup that's happening. The environment has changed. We're dealing with a outdated system that no longer works, that the city has got to come up with a solution for. This is no different than if you have a major traffic backup in the city, and you determine this is an issue, and you spend money and you spend effort to widen that road, improve that condition for the residents of this city. This is the same thing. This is a utility situation with your sewage system bringing feces into our homes on a regular basis, okay? People in the street are, they've had it. I mean, there were times when we were going to literally walk away from our home, foreclose, and say, we're done with this. Neighbors we've seen have been almost in tears because of the things that have happened, okay? We understand this is not something anyone here can flip a switch with, okay? But again, if this had been started, we looked at 20 years ago, we could have gotten somewhere by now. And without a plan to move forward, we'll be here in 20 years from now doing the same thing, except it's just going to get worse, okay? So, the committee that John talked about, we'd like to get the city involved along with some of the residents, and then start to talk to subject matter experts. One, let's identify and understand why is this condition happening? Not, I've been told, we had people out at 2:00 in the morning from the city saying, the system's working perfect, all the pumps are running. If you're acknowledging that your system is working perfectly, yet my basement is pouring sewage into it, then it's broken. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi, I'm Nancy Demming. I live at 235 Riverside Drive, which in the, in the city is called the Old Hefling House. Some of you may know of that. It's a historic house, and I love it. I don't love my problem in the basement. So, three weeks after I moved in, I had 8 inches of water throughout the whole basement, and it was sewer water, and there was toilet paper there. Since then, I have had five floods. After the first flood, I got a $10,000 water backup insurance rider on my insurer house insurance, and I have had five floods since then. And the last flood included not just the $10,000, but $17,000 more, so a total of, what, 5, 10, 20, 40, 50, about $75,000 over the time I have lived there. Before COVID came, I called the city and asked about what they were going to do for this. I don't remember who I talked to, but he said the problem was Woodside Circle, and there was going to be an engineering study. So, I'd kind of like to know what the results of that engineering study is, and I really, really would like this fixed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Is there anyone else in person who would like to speak to the commission?
Michael Chris, and it's 227 Riverside. Like several other residents, basement flooding, and it is the sewage water coming up from floor drains, and it's, I get, you know, floor drains, lower point. As Nancy spoke on, it's Woodside Circle is coming through due to poor infrastructure. We've shown a, we had our lids lifted. We've seen water flowing fine from our side of the piping, but telling Woodside Circle has no separate system, so when it downpours, both fall into their sewage system, flows over to our side over on Riverside and backs them up. I was told backflow prevention, okay? If all the residents have any issue, we get backflows at $2,300, $2,500 apiece, and we have these issues still. The backflows stop the water from coming up our drains, and water always finds a way, and we know to then have pipes bursting onto the sewers from backflows stopping water from doing what it needs to do, or again, figure out the infrastructure issue and correct the issue so we don't have these problems blowing up our basements anymore with sewage, which is a very disgusting thing to have to clean up on a weekly basement that's flooded like that. Just passed when I came home from work and it cleaned up after an eight-hour shift, went to bed, hear my fans pop off at night due to flooding the same night, have to clean it up, and spending another five hours cleaning my old basement and then bleaching it down to sanitize it. And that's just myself. As several others have, it was the same exact issue on a yearly basis, and it's not just once or twice, it's every year, two, three times, which is a very time-consuming and expensive endeavor for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else in person who would like to address the commission? Seeing none, do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay, we're clear on that? All right. We will, we don't typically acknowledge in person right, right now, but because we have so many of you, thank you for coming. We've definitely heard you, and we will make sure that we contact whoever leaves their phone number, and we will get, we will get to work on that. Thank you very much for coming. We have, we will move on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. Mr. Shipman.
At the August 1st, 2022 commission meeting during public comment, the question was asked, how much money and/or available hours has the city attorney generated over the last four years in regards to marijuana? This information would need to be requested through a FOIA, which can be obtained by contacting the city clerk.
I will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes for August 1st, 2022.
Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes? Roll call, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to general business. Item A, the M-I-H-A-S agreement. Mr. Shipman.
Michigan State Housing Development Authority opened the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund Program on February 14, 2022. This fund can assist homeowners with delinquent mortgage, housing payments, delinquent property taxes, delinquent condominium association fees, or delinquent utility payments to help them avoid foreclosure, displacement, or utility shut-off. In order for our homeowners to qualify for assistance, the city of Mount Clemens must enter into a Mihaw service provider agreement. We would only need to sign up one time to be added to the partner provider database. There is no cost to become a service provider. Mihaw funds are always dispersed directly to the Mihaw program partner to be applied to the client's delinquent account once the homeowner is determined eligible for the program assistance. Attached for your review is the Mihaw provider invitation letter, the provider participation agreement, and the provider contact information, along with the ACH instructions for payment. This agreement has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Would you like a motion?
Or Mr. Shipman? Oh, yes. Sorry about that. Yes, I would like, I would love a motion.
I move to approve the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund Provider Participation Agreement as presented and to authorize the execution of the contract by the appropriate city officials.
I'd love a second, too. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, now, does anybody have any questions or comments?
So, this contract is, we would be a provider in terms of water and property taxes? Is that where we would be able to help residents that way through that program?
Correct.
Okay. The one thing that I was a little unclear on is they are very clear in this agreement that they will only help up to a certain amount, and then it goes back to being, you know, can you still do next steps to, does that freeze it? Or can you still go after the remaining amounts? Or, that's the only thing I, I was worried about, is people think that, I have no idea how much in terms of water bills or property taxes they are willing to cover and for how long, right? It's, I think this, they said this program goes to the 26, but it was also provided for limitations, too, as to how many times you can actually get benefits from that. So, I was just curious if you...
I do not read it to, to include real estate taxes.
Okay.
It says a, it lists what a provider is, and they talk about mortgage, mortgage holder, county treasurer, land contract vendor, condo association, or provider of public utilities. So, I think the only thing that it would impact with the city would be water.
Water.
And, and you are essentially agreeing not to shut someone off if they become a participant in the program, and/or if you have shut them off.
Turn it back.
Turn it back on when they're a part, when they provide the documentation that they're a participant in the program.
I certainly don't want to exclude any of our residents from participating in this program, but I'm just curious as to how long do they help you? I mean, do they help you get back current? Do they continue to pay it for the next five years?
So, it was funded out of, you know, some of that ARP of...
Federal money.
Money, and they could, they could continue to fund it, or they may just let the initial investment, I think it was 262 million in the letter, or something like that, they could just let that go till it's exhausted, or they, they could refund it. I mean, we don't know what they're going to do.
I mean, they have the date of 2026 in here.
And also, the participation in the program is voluntary, and either the provider, which would be the city, or the homeowner, may terminate their respective participation without cause with 30 days written notice.
Right.
So, you can...
We can get out of it.
Get out of it.
But it says here, but after you've gone through it, but any agreement addressing the remaining deficiency will be strictly between the provider and homeowner, page three. If, I'm just curious as to, are you, maybe we don't know all the ins and outs yet of how it will work, but if a, a resident has a whopping water bill, and, you know, does it cover it once? Does it catch, make them current? Does it, I'm just curious as to how it works.
I don't know as far as continuing situations. Obviously, for one situation, they would cover it, and then if somebody somehow got an extravagant bill and they only covered so much, they would still be, you know, on the hook for the rest of the, the money through a payment option or whatever the case might be, but...
Yeah, it mentions amortizing, amortizing the deficiency into future payments.
Commissioner Dempsey.
How will our residents know about this?
Well, once you approve it, we're going to put it out in the Clementine and out on the webpage and social media.
Okay. Because normally, that's always the concern, that our residents aren't aware of some of these programs, so...
We also, I mean, it's always an option, too, when people do come forward to try to set up payment plans.
That's what I was wondering.
Then it's a resource.
There'll be brochures down at the treasurer's counter for people coming in to pay their water.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Moving to item B, audit engagement letter. I'll entertain a motion.
I move the 2020, I would be the 2020 and 2021? Is that correct?
Yes.
No, no, no.
No.
I move the 2021 and to 2022 engagement letter for Plant and Moran to conduct the audit of the financial records of the city of Mount Clemens as approved, and the interim city manager is authorized to sign it.
Support.
Mr. Shipman.
It's that time. It's time for the annual audit, so enclosed is the engagement letter and the, you know, contract with Plant and Moran are the same. If there's any questions on that?
I had a question, because I remember city manager, former city manager Johnson talking about how we would have to do a special audit this year, Cliff, for, because of the federal funds? Remember a more like comprehensive audit?
Yeah, it's called a single audit.
There was concern that if we may enter with some of the federal laws about...
Cliff, come to the microphone, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was concern that, I mean, that we received all these federal funds, that we may have to be engaged in a single audit. That's mandated by state and fed law, and it's quite expensive. However, we did not receive the federal funds in this year, and we have to actually go in a single audit. We will definitely be in a single audit for 22, 23. So, I won't say we're skipping, we just delayed it one year.
Did we budget for it this past, in this, that, this year?
Before coming out, yes, I have.
Okay. Well, I mean, for the future one, you did, but we didn't in the past.
Well, I kind of knew at the time when we were engaged, and also, I had received notice from the federal government. We didn't expect the second half of the federal funds to come in, so we thought, you know, we'd be okay.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Menzner.
So, I added up your figures here for fees and payment terms, and that comes to a total of $72,485. I was just confused because in Mr. Johnson's projected budget, the 2022, 2023 budget was only $60,000, and his 2021, 2022 audit was 47, so that's a massive increase.
Huge increase.
The audit went up $5,000 this year from last year.
Should have been budgeted, though, I would think.
Yeah, that's not what's in the budget book, but anyway.
The audit is...
Nothing you can do. Come on, because I can't hear you on Zoom.
Other costs are split up between various funds.
Right.
So, you just don't look at one particular area. In fact, what we're looking at, as I explained to Greg about two weeks ago, I believe that we can reduce the cost of the lot from 70 down to about 65, 64, because I spent a lot of time in the Florida, not long, with one of the carpeters, and I said, break me down. Why does it cost me 70-some thousand? And I remember 10 years ago, in another community, I was paying 22, and I was going for national awards at that particular community. And he explained, well, they have our time retaining people, they have, I don't want to say the dollar, but a monumental increase to retain their staff. They're, they're recruiting staff now who are only sophomores in college. I mean, so, you know, at the end of your senior year, you go, you go and line up and interview for jobs. They're, they're recruiting now, they can't, they cannot get people. Costs are going up in labor market and the financial economy market. But we can reduce our costs by a couple of things that we can do in-house that I didn't know they were doing, and when I had them, you know, delaying that bill to break in segments, I said, you don't need to do that, we'll do that. We have the staff to do it. So, we can knock down several thousand dollars to that $72,000.
But we're about to sign the engagement letter for that amount. But we are about to sign an engagement letter for that amount.
Right, well, I'm just saying, that would be the max.
Okay.
That would be the max. And I certainly hope they make it less than. And also, I had the audit delivered a month before.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
Isn't Plant and Moran one of the 100 best companies to work at? Haven't they been voted that every year?
Yeah.
Till the COVID.
Yeah, totally so, and I know many people at the firm. It is a phenomenal place to work for.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody good? Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Move to item C, the utility rates. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the retail water and sewer rates, the wholesale water and sewer rates, the vector and septic hauler rates, and the miscellaneous fees recommended by the city consulting engineering in the attached documents.
Support.
Mr. Shipman?
and I was going for national awards at that particular community. And he explained, well, they have hard time retaining people. They have, I don't want to say the dollar, a monumental increase to retain their staff. They're recruiting staff now who are only sophomores in college. I mean, so, you know, at the end of your senior year, you go, you go and line up and interview for jobs. They're recruiting now, they can't, they cannot get people. Costs are going up in labor market and the financial economy market. But we can reduce our costs by a couple of things that we can do in-house that I didn't know they were doing. And when I had them, you know, delaying that bill to break in segments, I said, you don't need to do that, we'll do that. We have the staff to do it. So we can knock down several thousand dollars to that 72,000.
But we're about to sign the engagement letter for that amount. But we are about to sign an engagement letter for that amount.
That would be the max.
Okay.
That would be the max.
Natural.
And I certainly hope they make it less than. And also, I had the audit delivered a month before.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
Isn't Plant Moran one of the 100 best companies to work at? Haven't they been voted that every year?
Yeah.
Till the COVID.
Yeah, probably so, and I know many people at the firm. It is a phenomenal place to work for.
Okay, everybody good? Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Move to item C, the utility rates. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the retail water and sewer rates, the wholesale water and sewer rates, the vector and septic hauler rates, and the miscellaneous fees recommended by the city consulting engineering in the attached documents.
Support. Mr. Shipman.
Well, we had a, what I think was a productive work session where we discussed, we had our city engineer, A W N, and we discussed the retail water and sewer rates. We also discussed the vector and septic hauler rates. We discussed the wholesale water rates, as well as the miscellaneous fees rates, and they have made recommendations for each. I will say that we had, I came in kind of in the middle of it, but we had several hours' worth of meetings going back and forth on the different rates and the different costs, and what should be put before you this evening. So we didn't take any of this lightly.
All right, do we have, we've, we've discussed this for about an hour previous to this meeting, but does anybody have any questions or comments further?
I still have a problem with the increase in the retail water rates, but at this point, I mean, I don't know that there's any more discussion, but as, as our residents just noted at the beginning of this meeting, if we need to figure this out about what we are doing with this water sewer plant, and our infrastructure's in trouble here. And we have all known it's coming, and so this is a Band-Aid. I, I just don't think that the residents should have to pay an increase.
Do you want to ask for a friendly amendment to remove retail water and sewer rates and make that a separate motion?
If other commissioners are willing to think that's appropriate. I don't see how you can do that. I mean, you're hitting up, you're removing residents, but you're hitting up all the businesses. And that's a huge, it'll be a huge increase there, too. And how do we... And most of the time, on businesses, I have familiarity with several that, they don't use a lot of water, but the fixed fee is high. The restaurants do. Well, the restaurants do, but I've said, I didn't say which businesses I had familiarity with. And it's a fixed fee they pay every month with basically little to no consumption at all. And it's, so, I mean, that's how I feel at this point. We've discussed it, as you said, for an hour prior to this, and, but I can't in good conscience approve the increase in the retail water and sewer rates.
I totally acknowledge your concern, and I understand not wanting to have an increase. Everything has been costing more and more, right? But we have these facilities, and we have to stop kicking the can down the road, and we have to fix them, and you have to have money to do that. And I know that it shouldn't fall on the backs of residents with taxpaying, but we also have to fix this.
But that's not what this is about. And the, in order to fix the problems that we're talking about here, it's a whole other study, and that's what I'm saying. We have to look at the whole situation.
The other study is the water filtration.
Everything.
We're talking about a sewer problem.
I know, now we have another problem.
This will address a sewer problem. This is addressing capital improvements on the sewer facility, the water treatment facility. That's what it spelled out here for us. They know that we have to make a separate decision based on the water filtration. Separate.
I don't agree. I think that we put a Band-Aid on things, then. We have been limping along trying to fix this stuff for many years. We need a complete look at this whole situation and figure out what to do, and what, it is gonna cost everybody a lot more money, no question. But we owe it to everyone to figure out the entire picture, the big picture. And I just feel very strongly that until we do, we, we have to, we shouldn't be raising rates. That's my opinion.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I just think we better do a better job at explaining what our rates are. When you take a look at these other communities, where we are at 167 after this increase, we're, you know, we're still one of the lowest, and I think we don't do a good enough job in getting that out there to the people. Because people keep saying, oh, our water rates are the highest, but they're not higher than Frazier, who's paying 276 compared to 167. I mean, I think, not that that's going to make them feel any better, but the point is, we're not the highest. We are, no matter which route we're gonna go, it's gonna take us years before another water plant is either gonna be built or we go with Great Lakes water, either way. But I'm gonna tell you, I feel whichever way we go, there's gonna be a larger increase.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I mean, I, I think if we need now this increase to keep what we have going, we need to do it, as much as it hurts all of us. And I just don't see how we can separate and pick and choose who are going to. I kind of have to rely on our engineering company. They know better than I do, that's for sure. And I trust their assessment of all this, so.
Well, and...
That's just where I stand.
Their actual increase to make us neutral, right, was 13.8, and we're not going anywhere near that.
No. But we also have cash in this fund.
Which is why we're able to only do five.
Because the bonds, we are no longer paying on the bonds.
Which is why we're...
We've said it all, I, I just feel very strongly about this.
Commissioner Mencer.
So I'm, I'm looking at the capital improvement plan that was included in our budget that we just passed. And if we just look at sewer system because of the residents who are here, all right? Critical need, vector, we talked about this earlier. We haven't been able to buy that yet. You look at North Rose pump station upgrades, the gross spec pump station upgrades, critical sewer linings, sewer repairs on Hubbard, sewer repairs on North Wilsons, on High Street, on Euclid, CCTV storm system, and a CCTV, imagine that's closed caption TV, Lenny? Yeah, collection system. We have a lot of critical needs here in the sewer system alone that might help alleviate some of these issues over here. I'm not happy about having to upgrade, about having to increase this. And when we talked about the fact that the increase is approximately $3.09 a month, we're paying quarterly, so that you're looking at, you know, $9.27 quarterly. Is $9.27 quarterly worth having no sewers in your basement? That would be my question. If we can make the, some of these... If we can make...
That's not gonna guarantee that they're not gonna have sewers in their basement.
That's no guarantee, folks.
You lost me on that one.
But if we can make some of these repairs that, that our utilities director has identified as critical, and that's just the sewer. I mean, I, I can read you, you know, the retention treatment basin, and I can read you the water treatment plant and the distribution system. You know, there's, there's all kinds of stuff here. I, I just think that we have an aging structure. We have critical needs that must be addressed, and I don't think that we can wait for the FISPAC study and the months of conversation it's going to take to decide what the outcome will be. It was mentioned going to the Great Lakes Water Authority. There are some of us who are adamantly against that. The, you know, how will we pay for a new plant? These are discussions that are gonna take months, and quite frankly, they're, they're gonna have to involve residents. So I, I don't think we have a whole lot of choice tonight.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
No.
Hammond.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes, and we'll move on to purchases and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support. You learned. Mr. Shipman.
Well, you'll notice that there's a couple sole source waivers that are in here from Lenny. So the one from Water Tap, that's a company that they've used as long as Lenny can remember. Last time they went out to bids, there was no other bidders for it. And that's something that they don't use necessarily on a regular basis. That's for when they have a break, they can't shut it off. They come in, they, they basically plug it. So that's on an as-needed basis, but when you need them, you really need them. And they've been shown to be reliable. And like everybody else, they've had to raise their rates, obviously, but chances are, no one else will bid, because nobody usually bids on it. And I'm sure Lenny, if somebody else did come up from somewhere, would want to remain using this company, so.
Commissioner Mencer.
The only thing I wanted to comment on is there is a price in here for salt. This is August. I am not ready to talk about snow.
Duly noted.
Better buy it early, though.
We'll let the record show that.
Just like the winter clothes, it's...
Yeah, well, who knows how long it could take to get salt, right, Jeff? Has anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mencer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes. Moving on to consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Call the roll, please.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
City managers report.
It is Play Fountain time, Friday, August 19th, at 2:00 PM. Join advancing McComb and the City of Mount Clemens for the grand opening of the Play Fountain at Shadyside Park. Fire station mural. A local mother-daughter team of Alana and Angelica wines have been selected to paint the mural on the fire station. We are in the process of finalizing the composition. Work is anticipated to begin in the spring of 2023. Upcoming events. I will always remind you that the Downtown Farmers Market is now open every Wednesday from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM through September 14th. They're located next to the Anton Art Center, and we just talked about snow, and you brought it up. And before you know it, those fresh Michigan fruits and veggies are not gonna be there, and everybody knows they are the best. So get down there and take advantage of that. Join the Mount Clemens Public Library and Downtown Development Authority for summer stories and free ice cream for the whole family downtown every Tuesday through August 30th at 1:00 PM at the Fountain Stage on McComb Place. We also have the Uptown Friday Night Concerts going on August 19th, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, on the Fountain Stage on McComb Place, featuring Three Piece. The next Friday, August 26th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, once again, on the Fountain Stage, is featuring Tom Bartile May. And then we have the Riverside and Sound Concert, August 27th, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, at the Gazebo Stage on the Clinton River, featuring Air Margaritaville.
Does anybody have any questions or comments, or Mr. Shipman? Okay, hearing none. We will go to the, the last opportunity for public participation for this meeting, and all that we ask again is for your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. If there's anyone in person, we'll take those comments first and then go to Zoom. And we ask that you come to the microphone. Okay, hearing none. Anybody on Zoom? Thanks, Patrick. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Dempsey.
I have no comments.
All right. Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Mayor Crapp. I just would love to compliment interim city manager Greg Shipman on the wonderful job that he does updating us. I appreciate that very much. And it was so nice that you invited your boss tonight, your lovely wife and our city treasurer, his into that girl.
Yes.
I would like to acknowledge Lori. I know I embarrassed you, and you can get back at me, all right? Anyway, once a clemite, always a clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Mencer.
So I'd like to say thank you to Brian Tingley. I would, I am very happy to see the redevelopment-ready community certification. I think that's gonna make a big difference for us. And I'm hoping that we'll see a lot of new development from that. So thank you for that. I know it was a lot of work. It's been, I feel like it's been years. Yeah, it has been. So, but thank you for persevering and following through on that. It is gonna make a difference for this city. Everybody knows Miller Brothers. They had their customer appreciation day yesterday. It was absolutely fabulous. Roscoe was making balloon animals for the kids. There were hot dogs and hamburgers for a dollar. The girls volleyball team from the high school had some kind of, you bought a raffle ticket and put it in little, you know, buckets for prizes, you know, different things. And the Mount Clemens Optimist Club, we had done a raffle for first prize of $4,000, second prize 1,500, and then we did 25 tickets at $60 apiece. We drew all those yesterday and started calling all the winners today. It was really cool to realize that some of the people who won sold a ticket to...
I didn't get a phone call yet.
Yeah. Gave you a new one. And I wanted to point out tonight, we did approve the ceremony for the Fallen Heroes Memorial on 9/11. That memorial's particularly close to my heart. My dad has a brick on that, that walk. So does my brother, so does my nephew, so does my brother-in-law. They haven't all passed, but those bricks mean a lot to us, and our family goes every year to honor, you know, our family members. You will see a piece of the Twin Towers there, probably. You will see our fire department hoist the flag, the American flag with another fire department. You will see probably some of the Patriot Riders. You will see some veterans there. I hope that if you do anything to mark 9/11, you come down to downtown Mount Clemens. And I think that starts at 3:00 o'clock. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell.
At the last meeting, Commissioner Fournier and I asked about the Administrative Hearings Bureau. The city manager included a letter in our packet regarding the progress on that, and we will be having a work session on that, hopefully in September. So that's a good step forward. Also, regarding the residents that came here, I hope that they're gonna be able to receive some action with their meeting with the city manager. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond.
Thank you. I also want to address the Riverside community that came out, say, regarding the flooding. I hear you, and I can relate, because back July 2021, I experienced the same problem in my basement, and I'm right on Clinton River Drive. So as Commissioner Campbell said, the city manager, some action is taken on our behalf. That's all happened tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be a total naysayer tonight, but this, what a night for all of you to come out, right, when we're trying to talk. I mean, I didn't plan this, I just want everyone to know that. But what scares me about all of this, and I've been on the commission now for going on six years, and this was talked about back when I first started going on, on the commission, and I came to a lot of meetings before that. And we have been talking about the water plants and the sewer plants, and we've talked about them, and we've talked about them, and we've talked about them until we're all crazy. In the meantime, how many years did you say? 10 years? Your basements are still flooding. And we're gonna hit a crisis here if we don't... I mean, government moves slow, no question about it. Oh my God, does it move slow. But we're going to get, we're gonna get ourselves in a big mess. We are gonna hit a crisis if we don't try to speed it up and try to figure out what we can do about the utilities, about what's underneath the roads. And if you go down the sidewalk next to Pops, Sweets and Treats, by the parking lot there, it goes like this. I mean, there are things we have to fix, and it, it just, they're not pretty, they're not fun, they're not, you know, it's, it's like fixing, wow, you guys just spent all the money cleaning up your basements, and I am so sorry. I am so, so sorry you have to do that. But hopefully, we can get, light some fires and get that fixed before the big project has to happen, and, but get this stuff moving, because it's, it needs to move.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank all of the Riverside Drive residents that came out, like I said earlier, and please don't leave without making sure we get your contact info, and we'll get work, get to work on that. And, sorry about that. Please make sure you stop by the Play Fountain that Mr. Shipman mentioned. We're hoping that it's gonna be a great celebration of a lot of collaboration between nonprofit organizations, the public who really stepped up to fund that initiative, and, and the city itself. So it's an exciting project that we're hoping the community really gets to enjoy. On September eighth at six-thirty PM, I will host an evening coffee talk again. We're gonna start that again at Black Cat Coffee. And then Tuesday, September thirteenth at nine-thirty AM at John's Family Grill. So come on out and have a cup of coffee and have some conversation about what's going on in Mount Clemens. I want to let everybody know that the DDA received a matching placemaking grant from McComb County, and that will allow the DDA to purchase additional lighting and also increase our presence, our Christmas lights, but then also we keep our, the white lights that we placed in town that make a really big impact when people are, are down there in the evening. So we're excited to be able to do that, and we thank McComb County for, for giving us and acknowledging our project. Please, again, make sure you give us your contact info, and that is all I have tonight. So if I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. All those in favor.
Aye.
Everybody have a great night.
Great.